So this is a happy occasion. I know you're not here just to say thank you for the produce that you got from the community garden. Perfect timing of that. But Stephen's going to be sworn in as lieutenant this evening. Chief, thanks for all your help. All right, ready?
Yep.
You want to raise your right hand, please? Repeat after me. I, Stephen D. Accord.
I, Stephen D. Accord.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The City Charter.
The City Charter.
And all the laws of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio.
And all the laws of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Lieutenant Paramedic Class B.
Of the Office of Lieutenant Paramedic Class B.
Division of Fire.
Division of Fire.
City of North Ridgeville.
City of North Ridgeville.
Lorraine County, Ohio.
Lorraine County, Ohio.
Best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As I shall answer unto God.
As I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations.
No speech. No speech. I'm just introducing my wife. Karaoke. My wife and family. This is my daughter Savannah, my son Isaac, and my wife Melissa. They're going to be helping me put my badge on.
All right, congratulations once again. All right, all three, please. Just as important. Okay, chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, so that is the conclusion of our swearing-in ceremony. I know we have a lot of people here just for that part. So if you'd like to get out, this would be a perfect time. I mean, it's really exciting if you want to stay, but we'll take a pause here to let them move on. You're welcome. Thanks, guys. All right, there you go.
Thanks a lot.
Always good. He did, just now, yeah. The Office of Lieutenant. So.
You know what I noticed? She said Class B.
Yeah.
There aren't any classes anymore.
Oh, I just read what was on the paper.
Yeah, it's all, there's, it's just the terms. You don't go from classes.
Okay, we'll have to fix that for the next one. Okay. Ready to move on? April's having her own meeting over here. All right. Moving on, we have our legislation. There is quite a bit of it under first readings, and most of it will need the emergency clause for various reasons, and we'll go over those as we come to those. We are asking for your participation in a public survey. The Regional MetroParks Trails Connectivity Survey, if you remember, we talked about that several months ago. But the survey is back, and it is the MetroParks Organizations for Lorraine, Cuyahoga, Medina, Lake, and Geogee Counties, collaborating with the Northeast Ohio Area-Wide Coordinating Agency, which is NOACA, to develop a trail network that connects people throughout the region to opportunities, resources, jobs, destinations, and each other. You have the opportunity to help shape the future of our trails by taking the second survey and sharing your thoughts on creating better, safer trail options for everyone. Survey will remain open until December 20th, 2024. You can go to our city's website at nridgsville.org to access the survey. Tomorrow, in case you haven't heard or watched TV and saw all the commercials, it is election day, and it is an opportunity for you to exercise your right to vote. Polling locations are open from 6:30 a.m. until 7:30 p.m. If you're looking for your polling location, contact the Lorraine County Board of Elections or visit their website at votelorainecountyohio.gov. We have, the Senior Center is hosting a dementia friend's education session on November 7th at 6:00 p.m. at the Senior Center. It is a, an ongoing effort to educate and inform the community about education and resource information about dementia and how you can help your loved one and yourself cope with the, with dementia and Alzheimer's. So the next one-hour session again is free and open to the public Thursday night, November 7th at 6:00 p.m. City Hall will be closed on November 11th in observance of Veterans Day, and we want to thank all of our veterans for serving our country and protecting our freedoms. And on November 18th, there is another edition of Coffee and Conversation at 8:30 a.m. here in council chambers, and as always, hoping to see you there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give a shout-out to Mother Nature, who's been providing amazing weather for us and providing excellent opportunity for our contractors to make great progress on our capital improvements. Along with that, we also have four active residential sites that are also looking to get streets in this year, including Hampton Place 8, Harvest Point 3, Crossings at French Creek Phase 1, and Ridgefield Farms. We also recently had our pre-construction kickoff for rough briquetting. The Active Transportation Steering Committee had our last meeting at the end of October, and the final touches are currently being made to the TLCI plan. Once enacted, engineering will be able to use those identified sidewalk and trail needs for future, future planning endeavors. Engineering had much better results this year with our backflow test requirements. We only had to turn off a handful of people this year, out of 2,000, and I'm happy to report that everybody has successfully turned in a passing test. Lastly, engineering continues to coordinate between NOACA and First Energy to get the EV charging stations, which is scheduled to be installed at the back of the Senior Center parking area. And I'm hoping to get some progress on that particular capital improvement before the snow flies. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director of Finance?
Thank you, Council President. Before council tonight are several pieces of financial legislation to include an ordinance amending annual appropriations, a resolution authorizing fund advances, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds and advances, an ordinance providing for the issuance of notes, and a resolution authorizing then-announced certificates. In advance of this meeting, I sent council a memorandum detailing all items included in each piece of legislation, and I would like to ask council to consider adopting this legislation this evening with the emergency clause to ensure the Department of Finances has the resources necessary to meet our financial obligations. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Please note that council has received the August 2024 as well as the September 2024 Police Department reports, and council thanks the members of the administration for providing these reports, both verbal and written. That'll bring us to new business. So under new business, the North Ridgeville Planning Commission took action at their regular meeting on October 8th, 2024 on the following item. Actually, clerk, can you just please read the Planning Commission action item for St. Peter Catholic Church?
Sure. St. Peter's Catholic Church, 35777, Center Ridge Road. Permanent parcel number 0700021117078 and 076. Applicant Patrick Highland, Prospectus, 1300 Euclid Avenue, Suite 910, Cleveland, Ohio 44114. Proposal consists of parish hall addition and site improvements. Property is zoned R1 Resident District. Planning Commission action approved by a vote of four to nothing with the following conditions: allowed shared parking, variance is received from BZBA for setback, which was approved on October 24th, future submission of an administrative approval of landscaping plan, and lot consolidation.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Abens.
As it states, the Planning Commission did approve this. It looks like a very good project and improvement for the city overall. I move that we approve.
Second.
The motion was made by Abens and seconded by Swink to approve the Planning Commission's approval of the project at St. Peter Catholic Church. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Schaefer.
Is this in any way going to impact where the BP station is being cleaned up and ideally used for another purpose?
No, this is actually right next to the church itself. Where the rectory currently stands, they'll be removing that, and that is where the, the new addition will go.
So it's not going to affect it in any way?
No. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing. And that brings us to recess.
Mr. President, move to dispense with recess.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with recess. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Okay, recess has been dispensed. We'll move on to first readings, and up first is 2024-126.
2024-126, a resolution authorizing fund transfers and advances.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-126. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-126 for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was then moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-126 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions?
I have a question or comment, I would guess.
Mr. Schaefer?
I noticed the budget had some monies for Christmas decorations, so I would assume that's why we have the emergency clause, to get that done as soon as possible.
I don't believe that was in this particular piece of legislation. Director of Finance, do you want to?
That amendment is included in the appropriation amendment, which is.
129. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
A motion carries seven, nothing, and 2024-126 is adopted. 2024-127?
A resolution authorizing fund advances.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
The motion was made by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-127. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause, again, for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-127 for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And all opposed, say no. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-127 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, nothing, and 2024-127 is adopted. 2024-128?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $5,025,000 worth of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to provide funds to pay cost of acquiring and installing ultrasonic water meteor equipment, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-128. Are there any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Mayor?
We'd like to pass this with the emergency, so that way we can go out to sell those bonds, I'm sorry, the notes, as soon as possible, so that way we can get the money as fast as possible to start the project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And all opposed, say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
I'm sorry, move, withdraw that motion. Move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated by the mayor?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-128 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And all opposed, say no. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-128 with the emergency clause in place. At this time, are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2024-128 is adopted. 2024-129 amended?
Ordinance amending ordinance number 6121-2023 of the City of North Ridgeville, Ohio, providing appropriations for the period commencing January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to dispense with the second and third reading of the amended version?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-129 amended. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to explain that the amended version before you tonight includes the debt service for service payment for the Performance Lane TIF. The original revenue estimates were a bit lower than what was received from Lorraine County, and so we need to amend this to allow us to make the payment to the bond trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons just stated by the Director of Finance?
Second.
The motion was made by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-129 amended for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-129 amended with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2024-129 has been adopted, the amended. 2024-130?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Modern Massage and Spa LLC, Courtney Cook, for 500 square feet of commercial space at 7059 Avon Belden Road.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-130. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, this space is the old R&amp;K building, if you remember that, and it's the far north side of that building. There used to be a dentist who was making dental fixtures, not, anyway, he was in that space. And that's the space that Ms. Cook would like to rent, you know, in that building, and we are looking to put her in there on the, a little bit faster, so that way she can get started. There's some work that needs to be done before she can open up her business.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments or questions? Again, the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-130. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so we could get this space rented. It's been vacant for quite some time, and I'd like to get somebody in there.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to add the emergency clause to 2024-130 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to adopt 2024-130 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2024-130 is adopted. 2024-131?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Ridgeville to enter into contract for the purchase of a one-ton Ford F-550 dump truck with plow and accessories for the Public Works Department, not to exceed $130,000.
Mr. President, move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-131. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. President, on this ordinance and the next one, 132, we obtained two chassis already for these trucks. We're looking to build out the rest of them. As you know, we were struggling with getting vehicles of all types and sizes. It's taken a while for those chassis to come in, but now we're looking to move on to the next stage of building those out. So that's, we're looking to do that hopefully and get it passed and obtained maybe before the snow flies.
Okay, yeah, I think we did talk about that at budget time. This has been appropriated.
We did, yes.
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-131. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause, as this is a necessary item that we're trying to get before winter.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to add the emergency clause to 2024-131 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And all opposed, say no. It was then moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to adopt 2024-131 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2024-131 has been adopted. 2024-132?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Ridgeville to enter into contract for the purchase of one-ton Ford F-550 dump truck with plow and accessories for the Public Works Department, not to exceed $130,000.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-132. Are there any comments or questions?
This is the second chassis that I referenced, and I will ask for the emergency clause on this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause as, for the same reasons as we stated in the previous ordinance?
Second.
The motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Swink to add the emergency clause to 2024-132 for the reasons stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to adopt 2024-132 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2024-132 has been adopted. 2024-133?
An ordinance repealing NRCO Chapter 866, temporary businesses of the North Ridgeville Business Regulation Code, and prohibiting temporary businesses.
Okay, 2024-133 will be sent to the Committee of the Whole for further review. And before we move on to second readings, we have 2024-134, which was added at the beginning of the meeting.
A resolution authorizing the execution of then-announced certificates by the city fiscal officer and the payment of amounts due for various purchase orders.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings?
Second.
It was, it was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2024-134. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Schaefer?
What is a then-announced certificate?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Through the chair, a then-announced certificate is what authorizes the fiscal officer to pay an invoice that, in which the purchase order came after the invoice date. So it has nothing to do with council having budgeted the money for this particular one and all others. The funding is available. You've appropriated it. This is the legislation that allows us to pay the invoice due.
Okay. Thank you.
And on that note, on the Exhibit A of, of this legislation, this is necessary to pay for the annual lease payment for the Ford dump truck and for equipment service plans for the fire department. Again, I do want to stress that these were pre-approved by council and authorized, and again, this is just authorizing the fiscal officer to pay the invoices due.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments or questions? So again, the motion was made by DeVries and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second, third readings for 2024-134. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And all opposed, say no.
No.
Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
No.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Motion carries six to one.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. DeVries?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance?
Second.
It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2024-134 for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Can I ask a question?
Not during voting.
Okay. Well, no then.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Okay, so then we'll move on to second readings. That was, that was on the emergency clause. Oh, I apologize. Excuse me. It was moved by DeVries and seconded by Awig to adopt 2024-134 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on? Is this the setting readings or first?
This is adopt 2024-134.
Is that this? That I just handed?
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read this yet. I got this like 20 minutes ago. I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable voting on something I haven't read.